Welcome to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for September 4th, 2014. May I have a roll call of the members?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam, absent. Steve Timm.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Amanda Weaver, absent. Donna Kimsey.
Here.
Silka Pop is also absent.
Thank you. May we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
And I'll second the motion.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. May I have approval of the minutes of August 21st, 2014?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2014.
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, four to zero to one. One abstention. Commissioner Kimsey.
Thank you.
Now is the time for the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. We have nobody in the audience sadly, for those watching on TV. We always welcome you to come down. So, we will move on to the public hearing. Case number WZ-14-07, an application filed by Rocky Germano for approval of a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial NC to Mixed Use Neighborhood MU-N for property located at 4360 Gray Street.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Lauren McLaughlin. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And tonight I am presenting case number WZ-1407. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation.
Excellent.
The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the planning commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So we'll start with an aerial and a look at the surrounding area. So on this map, north is to the top of the screen, you can see 44th Avenue bisecting the image. The subject property at 4360 Gray Street is outlined here in bright blue. It's on the far northeast side of Wheat Ridge. As I mentioned, 44th Avenue here is at the top is just one property away from the subject lot. You can see also that the city boundary is just within a lot of the subject property. Lakeside is to the north and Mountain View is to the east across Fenton Street. The parcel itself is just over 8,000 square feet in size. It's rectangular in shape. It has no irregularities in terms of shape or topography. And that frontage width on Gray Street is 60 feet. We'll take a look now at the zoning map for this neighborhood. The property is Zone Neighborhood Commercial, and that's indicated by that light pink color. You can see that it's surrounded by a variety of commercial and residential zone districts and uses. And I'll just walk you through a couple of those. So this orange, darker orange color to the north and west is the Restricted Commercial Zone District. The property immediately to the north is a multi-tenant building. It includes a clothing store and a radio shack. Across the street, that Restricted Commercial piece is actually used as a single-family home. And as you get closer to 44th Avenue, you have a slightly more intensive Commercial Zone District. C1 is Commercial 1. So there's a car wash. And then farther west, a pawn shop. Looking at the properties to the south and east, that lighter orange color is the Residential 3 Zone District. That's a zone district that allows for single, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. And in this neighborhood, those R3 parcels are largely single-family homes. So just a couple photos of the property. This is an image from Gray Street looking east. The structure on the property was built as a single-family home in 1948. And given its commercial zoning, it was converted to be a business. Our business license records in the city for this particular property only go back to 1990. But we know it's been, excuse me, a bookkeeping and tax service business that closed in 2010. The front yard, you can see, is more or less a small, modest parking lot that accommodated a few clients at a time. There used to be a freestanding sign on the north side of the lot and a small sign over the awning. I have a couple more pictures that I borrowed from the MLS listing of the interior of the property. Being that it is a converted home, it really has retained some of that residential character, particularly on the inside and the backyard. So you can see that there's nice wood floors throughout. There's several bedrooms. I believe two bathrooms. Has a full kitchen. And in the backyard, you're only seeing one snapshot of the backyard from the alley. But there is, on the left side of the screen, you're looking into a two-car garage. And then there's a gazebo. And behind the gazebo, sort of between the home and the garage, there is a grassy area. So it does, it certainly retains that residential character. And clearly, a tax service business is sort of more modest commercial use that wouldn't need to modify that interior too much for commercial occupancy. So the property is currently for sale. And the applicants have indicated to us that they've gotten a lot more interest in using the property as a residence than as a business. And so the purpose of the zone change request is to allow potentially somebody to buy the property and finance it as a residence and use it as a residence. This slide is showing you how we treat different types of uses in the existing and proposed zone districts. The interesting quirk or difference between our straight Commercial Zone Districts, such as Neighborhood Commercial and the Mixed Use Districts, especially in relation to residential. So if you have an existing residence, you can remain an existing residence in a Commercial Zone District, and you can convert to a commercial use. But once you are a commercial use, you can't go back fully to a residence. So you can stay a business. You can add in accessory residence. So it has to be at the rear of the property or the second floor. It's limited in size. But you can't go back, even if it looks and feels like a home. So the zoning trumps that building type. In the Mixed Use District, it's very similar in terms of the types of commercial activities that are allowed. But the biggest difference is that residences are allowed as a primary use. And you're also allowed to have a combination or a mix of uses in any ratio of commercial and residential. So really, this property in particular might lend itself well either to a full residence or to a live-work scenario. And that would be allowed under the Mixed Use zoning. Obviously, building permits would need to be pulled to sort of switch those occupancies, but the zoning would not be restricting that. At this time, as I mentioned in the staff report, there's no proposal for any new development. The reason for the request is simply to allow different use of the existing structures. But in this table, I have compared what standards would apply if the property were to redevelop. Zoning tends to outlast buildings and occupants in some cases. So it's important to compare these types of standards. The first line, we've talked about any type of residential-commercial use is allowed in mixed use, which is the primary difference. From a design standpoint, they're very similar standards that would apply on both zone districts. The property is within an overlay district for our architectural and site design manual. So the only difference there is which document would regulate the architecture. But they're very similar in terms of transparency requirements and material variation. Building height is similar. There is conceivably some flexibility in the Mixed Use neighborhood if the property were to be all commercial. But given the size of this particular property, it's unlikely that a building of that height would be viable. The build-to requirements are the same for both zone districts. If the site was to be scraped in either zoning, the building would be pulled closer to the street. The setbacks are also similar in that particularly the south and west setbacks are enhanced based on the height and because, based on potentially the height of the building and in particular because of the proximity of neighboring residential properties. And then lastly, the ratio of lot coverage to landscaping is similar. There's slightly more allowance for higher building coverage in the Mixed Use neighborhood than the current zoning, but it's not dramatic. In terms of the rezoning process, the first required step in a rezoning application is to have a neighborhood meeting, and we had that meeting on July 22nd. Anybody within 600 feet of the property has notified owners and residents, and nobody attended that meeting. Once the application is received, we send a zone change application on referral to other city departments and to other utility agencies, water district, sanitation district, fire, Excel Power. And we did not receive any concerns from any of those agencies. Ultimately, if a potential purchaser is to use the property as a residence, they would have to be in contact with the building division to make sure there's no physical changes that would need to happen in order to receive a certificate of occupancy for residential use. As the commission is aware, we use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests. And primary among those is consistency with the city's comprehensive plan and vision Wheat Ridge. And staff does believe that a rezoning to Mixed Use neighborhood is consistent with the plan. This excerpt, this image on the right-hand side is an excerpt from the structure map. That's sort of functions as our land use map. that's sort of functions as our land use map, and there aren't street labels, so let me orient you. This east-west road is 44th Avenue. This red north-south road is Harlan, and Gray Street is just one to the east, so the property is highlighted in blue. And essentially, 44th Avenue is identified as a neighborhood commercial corridor, so typically lower intensity uses. Harlan is actually shown as a more intensive commercial corridor in this particular area of town, and the neighborhood that surrounds the property to the south and west is identified as a neighborhood. And so, staff feels that the mixed-use neighborhood zoning is, it's really intended on either a neighborhood commercial corridor or an area that's a transition, such as this property, which is really serving as the buffer between the commercial uses to the north and the neighbors to the south. So, staff has concluded that this request meets the zone change criteria. A more extensive analysis is in your staff report, but just briefly, we have found that the existing and proposed zone districts are comparable, and given that MUN will allow for similar commercial uses and lower intensity residential uses, staff believes the zone change will not have an adverse effect on the public welfare. As I mentioned, we find that the mixed-use neighborhood zoning is supported by the city's comprehensive plan. There's no sub-area plan that has effect in this particular neighborhood to compare with. And finally, the mixed-use neighborhood zoning does appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which has a variety of different types of uses. And so, for those reasons, I'm recommending approval of the zone change request. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions, and the applicant is here in the audience if you have questions for him as well.
Thank you. So, I will start from my right. Commissioner Ohm?
Yes, I have one question. So, in theory, if someone were to construct an accessory structure such as a shed, what would the setback be on the north side?
So, in mixed-use neighborhood, depending on the use, so if it was a residential use and they wanted to construct a shed, we would look at the most similar residential zone district for those standards. If it was a commercial use, we'd look at the setbacks that would be applying to commercial zone districts. So, which side were you asking?
North side.
The north side. Typically, it'd be at least five feet.
I only ask that because it says that it's zero feet on the north side.
If it's not, if it's non-flammable material.
Well, that's the existing, right?
In the current zone district, you're allowed to have a zero-foot setback if you're a non-flammable material.
Right. So, for a proposed mixed-use neighborhood?
Oh, sorry, yes. That is, for the primary structure, that would be allowed. For an accessory structure, that would be different. So, these setbacks are for primary structures.
I don't have a problem necessarily with the zero feet for the primary structure, but I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the reasoning why a building where people are in has a zero-foot setback, and why an accessory structure such as a shed would have a five-foot. It doesn't, I'm not understanding why.
Sure. Well, the mixed-use zone district doesn't address accessory structures at all right now, and it's something that we've observed shortly after we adopted the mixed-use standards. And so, theoretically, we could say that no accessory structures are allowed in mixed use, but what we've been doing up to this point is comparing it to the most similar zone district. So, we don't have any zero-foot setbacks allowed for accessory structures, regardless of the type of construction, in any zone district.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Timms?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimsey?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorsey?
I have no questions.
And I have no questions. Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a presentation of any type? Okay. So, when you come up, give your name, spell your last name, and provide an address, please.
My name is Rocky Germano, G-E-R-M-A-N-O. My address, my, where I live is actually in Wheat Ridge, 5985 West 32nd Avenue. My business address is 902 Wadsworth, and I'm employed by Jericho Properties Realty.
Thank you.
I just wanted to pass some photographs to you. We've had a little facelift since you took the photograph from the MLS, and we kind of softened the approach to blend in more with the residential neighborhood, which we're talking about here. So, if I might, I'll pass these along to you and have you just take a look at the curb appeal. Now that we've softened the look, doesn't look like there's a parking lot for people to come in and do accounting business or anything like that. The property has been marketed for three months and been actually shown 19 times. And the feedback predominantly is it looks too commercial, it doesn't seem like a home, and I think with the facelift, we'll probably get this sold rather quickly. Another factor why the owner asked me, by the way, the owner that I represent lives in Hawaii. She's from the Wheat Ridge area, and she's living in Hawaii now, and so, we talked about it when I took the listing, and I told her that I would be willing to walk everything through and represent her in this rezoning. One of the other factors in being able to market the property was the availability of financing. With a commercial designation, that limits your number of buyers, and this would open it up to FHA, and with this price, that's exactly why you want an FHA loan available. It could also be available for some of the things that we have here available to buyers, the grant program, some other programs where we can get some buyers in and get this property as a homeowner situation rather than a rental. We've already got half of Wheat Ridge's rentals, other half homeowners, and I think that would be a good thing for the city to have another homeowner in this neighborhood. So, that's basically my story, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions you might have. I'm a 30-year realtor, basically doing most of my work throughout Wheat Ridge, Arvada, and Lakewood, so I do know a little bit about the homing and the density and that sort of thing. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dorsey?
Well, I think you did a nice job on getting rid of that broke-up concrete in the front in that picture, and I think this would, you know, sell as a home. And the way I read through the notes here, it, you could be a home with a small business involved also, so that might help you as far as.
Exactly.
Finding client also.
Kind of the trend these days, or people are getting out of the big real estate brokerages. I used to be metro broker for many years, went to an office, and there's so many that do home office now, not only in real estate but accounting and some of those, some of those type of insurance, and that would certainly open it up a lot. People like the high-tech and doing it from home and all this other stuff, so that would just be another set of buyers that we're going to bring in to the, to the mix.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimsey? Okay.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Timms?
Just a, just another question, a comment. I did drive by the property yesterday, and I was pleasantly surprised to see the landscaping upgrades and the softening, because that was going to be a comment of mine, the entire paving, the front yard. So, I was glad to see that, and I think that will be a good addition to help you market that, so thank you.
Commissioner Ohm? Any comments? And I have no comments. That's it?
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you. So, now, we will open it up to the public. We have no public, so I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
I'm sure I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-14-07, a request for approval of a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial to Mixed Use Neighborhood for property located at 4360 Gray Street for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Number two, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. Number three, the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
When does this go to city council?
This case will go to city council on October, Monday, October 13th.
So, one more time. Thank you. We appreciate it.
One other thing I just added. Photograph may be, didn't show it, but we put a fence along the north side. We now have a family tree there, and that's where they drop off all their goods and everything. So, we wanted to try to make visually a departure from commercial to residential along that block, so I don't know if it shows in that, but when you went by, I'm sure you noticed it was a new fence.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. 13th of October. It is a lucky day. So, no, they have to go in, they have to keep them. We have to keep them.
Oh, we do?
Yes. They're part of the record.
That's, that's true.
Yeah. No, it's all good. Okay. We're getting close. Other items?
I do have just a few updates. So, a quick staffing update, I think Meredith probably kept you apprised on our being short-staffed the last couple of months, but we do have a new planner, two, starting on Monday. Her name is Sarah, and then we will have a planner, one, starting a week from Monday, and his name is Joshua. So, you might see some new faces in the next couple of meetings. They're not required to come unless they have a case, but they seem very eager, so we're excited to have them. And then the only other thing I wanted to update you guys on is the Wadsworth Planning and Environmental Linkage Study that we've been doing. Since the Planning Commission has certainly had a role in some of the past plans, land use plans on Wadsworth, this is sort of the next step in hopefully transforming that corridor. A PEL is a precursor to an environmental assessment, to any environmental study that affects the street, and it's a relatively new type of document, but we're essentially, the city was awarded matching funds from the regional government, Dr. Cog, to look for improvement opportunities on Wadsworth in relation to transportation. And the nice thing about a PEL is that it, it looks a little bit more broadly, so it's been, Public Works Department is spearheading this project, but the community development has been really closely involved, knowing that a street not only moves cars through the state highway, but also sort of defines the character of that area. So, the study boundary is 35th to 48th avenues, and it's a 15-month project that actually started in February, and we do have a consultant working on it. Parsons Brinkerhoff has been the lead consultant, and I wanted to let you guys know about the project in case you hadn't come to our April public meeting. We do have a couple of public meetings in October, so you're obviously very much invited to attend those. On Monday, October 6th, we have a study session with city council, and then on Wednesday, October 8th, we have our more traditional public meeting. So, both of those are in here, and if you can't make one date, you're obviously welcome to come to the other one. The October 8th public meeting will be a little bit more interactive than the study session, but in terms of sort of what, what's going on with the project, we're, we know that Wadsworth fails from a congestion, congestion standpoint. We know that 38th and 44th intersections fail, and instead of, over the past few years, going in for tip money to try and fix those intersections, we've been holding off, trying to understand what the whole corridor will look like, so we don't do a throwaway project at one of the intersections. So, we're looking at the cross-section for that whole distance, 35th to 48th, and we're trying to identify not only what the whole vision would be, but also maybe some early-action projects that we could bite off and make some improvements. So, the goals of the project are obviously to meet current and future traffic demand. We're modeling it with 2035 numbers and, and providing sort of high media, or low, medium, high projections in terms of land use and how many more businesses might we have, how many more residences might we have. Multimodal has been a pretty big component of the project, so trying to get obviously continuous sidewalks, which we don't have today, and potentially a bike facility if that's appropriate on Wadsworth. So, like I said, we started in February, and we're hoping to have a few, you can't pick one final design in this type of project, you have to have a few alternatives. So, the meetings in October will be an update on what we've done up till now, and then looking at some of those final alternatives. So, that's it. Any questions on that? We have a website. If you go to the city's homepage, at the bottom right, the quick links, you'll see Wadsworth PEL, I think is what it's called. So, you'll, there's a quick presentation from our first public meeting and slideshow and a study area map.
Are we aligning with our neighbor sisters on any of this?
We've talked to the, yeah. So, in addition to the public meeting, we've had a series of task force meetings, so we had a meeting only with utility agencies. We had a meeting only with Jefferson County, Lakewood, Arvada, Dr. Cog, sort of different, five different focus group areas. So, we are talking to them. We'd like to think, it's a state highway, and it's on the actual National Highway System map, so CDOT has been on our project team, Federal Highways is on our project team. The real choke point is the hill and the interchange, and we can't touch that because that's not a right-of-way, and it creates a whole nother federal process. So, we are doing what we can within our boundary. Yep. Any other questions on that one?
So, the, the meeting started at 7:00?
Oh, that's a good question. We haven't sent an invitation out for the public meeting yet, so that will probably be 5:30 or 6:00, but look for that on our website, or we'll send out an email. And then.
October 8th.
October 8th. The October 6th meeting, study sessions begin at 6:30, but I don't know what their agenda will look like in terms of when this item might actually start.
Cool.
They will probably have a, so that night, tentatively at this point, is also a presentation on the budget, so you might check the agenda to see when you should come, if you want to come. And that's everything I had for updates.
Any questions? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'm sure I move to adjourn.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Nice job.